Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 3, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower. Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Ray Rower.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we have proclamations and presentations. And our first one, Chief Wise, we have a Police Reserves Academy graduation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. It's always a special occasion when we have reserves that are graduating from our training program, so tonight is no exception. It's been a while. The COVID crisis kept us from holding a class. But in this case, tonight, we have seven young women and men who are now graduating from their training program. The Reserve Program is a big deal to us here in the city of Coon Rapids. These are our citizen volunteers. These are the people who made a commitment to help the citizens of Coon Rapids when there are times when staff would be useful to help with traffic control, with additional tasks of the police department, generally speaking, just to support the mission for the city of Coon Rapids. And the generous giving of their time is a big deal. I know you implore people to have a time to give of themselves to our city and to help our residents and their folks that are just like that. And it's especially important for me on a personal level because 29 years ago, I was one of them. I was a citizen volunteer who stood up and said, "I'm willing to help out," and nearly three decades later, here I stand as a police chief. So anyway, I wanted to personally congratulate them for completing the field training. And secondly, I wanted to thank you for stepping up in our time of need. And with that, I want to pass things off to Sergeant Bill Hamas, who is the unit commander.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. For those who don't know me, like Chief said, I'm Sergeant Bill Hamas. I'm the Reserve Coordinator for the Police Department. Down to my left is actually Officer Austin Elbers. He's one of the Reserve Advisors. Today marks the official end of our Reserve Academy for the newest reserves. New hires go through an eight-week Reserve Academy before hitting the street. During the academy, they received training in many different topics, including legal issues, occupational safety, patrol operations, response to resistance, first aid, traffic control, report writing, and other job-related topics. All of the Reserve officers have completed the first step in training and have officially earned their position as a Reserve Officer with the Coon Rapids Police Department. Now that they have graduated from the Reserve Academy, they will move on to the field training program where they will work side-by-side other Reserve Officers and community service officers to better learn the job before moving on to solo patrol. Currently, our reserves serve the community in many fashions, including providing assistance to patrol officers on non-priority calls such as traffic direction. Our reserves donate hundreds of hours each year to the citizens of Coon Rapids by working functions such as the Fourth of July Carnival, snowflake day parades, Toys for Joy, Coon Rapids High School football games, security at the Community College, and Park Patrol, among many other functions. In 2021, our reserve unit in total worked 2,527 hours. Our reserves undoubtedly provide a massive support role to the police department. I welcome these new members to the family of Coon Rapids and thank them for their dedication to our community. I would like to thank the council members and Mayor Cook for allowing us to come and spend some time with you here this evening, and congratulations to all of our newest reserves who are graduating.
They didn't even seem to flinch when you said how many hours there were in 2021. That was good. Item two on our agenda this evening is to, as a National Public Works Week proclamation. Rather than read the discussion points, I always find a lot of them are already in this, so I'm just going to read the proclamation. Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Coon Rapids. And, whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are federally mandated first responders responsible for rebuilding, improving, and maintaining our transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And, whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders in the city of Coon Rapids to gain knowledge and understanding of the importance of public works first responders and public works programs in their community. And, whereas, the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the third full week of May as National Public Works Week in the city of Coon Rapids, and urge our citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities and events designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life proclaimed this third day of May 2022. Now, one of the things I noticed that wasn't in there is we're back to having an open house again this year. And Mr. Hammer, did you want to tell us about that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It wasn't in the proclamation, it was in the memo. And I guess it's nice to have a big audience here tonight. We don't have that. But Saturday, May 21, right down at the Public Works Facility on 111th Avenue, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, we have an open house. The kids love it. They get to climb around in the equipment and honk horns and play in things. And so, and it also allows other people to learn what the different divisions do, the technology that exists here, and how we serve the public. So I would welcome everyone to come on down, see what you provide for us, to do services for you, allow the kids to have a little fun, and maybe learn something along the way. And so if you're able to join us, that would be great. The 21st of May from 10:00 a.m. until noon. That's a Saturday.
I absolutely encourage you, whether you have children, grandchildren, or none at all, come and see what your taxpayer, what your tax money has purchased. The Public Works Garage is impressive, the equipment is impressive, and I know when we've brought my kids and now my grandkids, they just love it. So it's very nice. Anything else on Public Works Week? All right. Well, we read the proclamation into the record, and we invited the public to the Public Works Open House scheduled for Saturday, May 21, from 10:00 to noon. So I think we've done it. All right. And now we're on to item three, which is Building Safety Month proclamation. Building Safety Month. Whereas, our city of Coon Rapids is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And, whereas, our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And, whereas, these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And, whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And, whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And, whereas, "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action," the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And, whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies, and protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the city of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be Building Safety Month in the city of Coon Rapids proclaimed this third day of May 2022. All right. And we are up to the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. Item number four. Everybody should have a new set. Yep, all right, perfect. There was one small correction from Friday's packet.
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19, '22 meeting as presented tonight.
I second the motion. Motion by Grisgoviac, second by Hernandez Jr. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have three items on our consent agenda. The first one is to announce the 2022 Summer Concert Schedule. The Arts Commission is pleased to announce the 2022 Summer Concert Series at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park. The Arts Commission would like to announce their 2022 Thursday Nights Live at the Dam Summer Series, which will feature the following nine performers. On June 9, we've got The Castaways. June 16, we've got Sawyer's Dream. June 23, Rocky Lynn. July 7, Raquel and the Wildflowers. July 14, Eric Christensen and his support group. July 21, The Dirty Shorts Band. Okay. July 28, The Shimaleseki Fun Time Band. August 4 is the Ecuador Monta, and August 11 is the Revolution Five. All performances begin at 7:00 p.m. at the Performance Pavilion at the Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park, and the concerts are offered at no charge to the community. Anoka County has once again agreed to waive the parking fee during these evenings. The Arts Commission would like to recognize the assistance of the Anoka County Parks and Recreation Department Rangers and other staff in presenting this series. A local Boy Scout troop will sell popcorn, candy, soda, and water during the concerts. The North Star Lions Club will be selling food items such as hamburgers, hot dogs, and brats. They're not mentioning their walking tacos. I'm assuming they're still on there. The Arts Commission appreciates the opportunity to continue presenting this series to the community. And before I move on to the next item, I just want to encourage everyone, if you have not checked this out, grab a lunch here, come down on a Thursday evening. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful event. Next item on our consent agenda, which is item six on this evening's agenda, is to approve a service agreement with the Alexandra House. Alexandra House is a nonprofit corporation that is Anoka County's only women's shelter. It provides a 24-hour shelter, support services, advocacy, educational opportunities to residents in the city and Anoka County. Alexandra House also works with the police department and the city attorney's office with domestic violence cases. Alexandra House has made a request for financial assistance for the services it provides to the city. The council did appropriate $12,500 to the Alexandra House in the 2022 budget for these services, and this service agreement reduces the party's wishes to writing. The agreement is for one year, and can be terminated by either party with 30 days' notice. And should this contract be terminated early, the funds paid shall be returned by Alexandra House in proportion to the number of months the contract was not fulfilled. And that's, to the inside crew, that's known as the Johnson clause.
You've been teasing me about that for seven years.
No, it took you that long, it took you a few years to get it in there. So we're looking to approve the city to enter into a service agreement with Alexandra House to provide shelter, support services, and advocacy to affected city residents. And the seventh item on our agenda, which is the third and final item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-59, Accepting Donation for a Park Bench. The city has administered a park bench donation program for many years. The family of Audrey Rude Allen would like to donate $700 for a park bench to be installed in Crooked Lake Park to honor her memory. The city council is required to accept financial donations by resolution per state statutes. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-59 to accept a $700 donation from the family of Audrey Rude Allen, and further, we go on to thank them very much. And they are doing this to honor her memory and reflect on 64 years of fun the family has had on Crooked Lake. So it's very nice. And that is our complete consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd move approval and adoption of the three items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. Any discussion or questions on the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
I'd just like to thank Alexandra House for all they do for crime victims in Anoka County, and also for the work that they do supporting our city attorney and the help that they give to victims as advocates for victims and the assistance they give in coordinating with victims and prosecutors and others in the criminal justice system. I know that historically, I think when we, when I came onto the council seven years ago, I think the contribution that the city used to make to them was about $10,000, and we upped it some time ago to $12,500. I would encourage staff to confer with Alexandra House every year as to what they think that they need, and in the future, consider even increasing that in years to come. But given that we've got this amount which was requested, I'm comfortable with the amount. But I would like to see us always ask them every year what they think they need, and there may be appropriate times in the future to increase the contribution of the city for good reason.
I would rather have our staff figure out what the value of the service they provide is, rather than just give them free rein, but, you know.
Well, no, I think, I think we all know, they do provide a significant value to the city, but also they provide a value to the whole county because they provide those shelter services for victims who live in our community.
Absolutely. All right. Any other discussion or questions on the?
Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I would just like to, in addition to that, express appreciation to the Arts Commission for that concert in the parks. You mentioned it. If you haven't been out there, get out there and do that. It's a great asset to our community. And then also, since it's in Ward 1, I'd like to express appreciation to the Rude family for the park bench donation at Crooked Lake Park. It's a great setting for a park, and I know it will get lots of use out there, so. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. And we are up to item eight, to consider a resolution of support for the recycling center expansion project, city project 18-26. Ms. Sinclair, do you want to talk to her, or Mr. Hammer, or do you want me to just read the discussion points, or what would you like me to do?
I can give a little summary.
All right.
So as discussed in our workshop tonight, the resolution before you is part of the formal application process that is required by the MPCA to move forward and finalize the expansion grant process. Once it's completion, we would be able to go out and start the bid process to finalize costs and get that to you for approval.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Ms. Sinclair before we?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move to adopt Resolution 22-61, supporting the grant application for the MPCA for the recycling center expansion and site improvements, city project 18-26.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Grisgoviac. Discussion, further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, just so everybody knows that this is, you know, there's a process to get a grant from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and this is our method to go and formalize that request for that grant money that allows us to do the work at the recycling center.
And this is for the, remind me, this is for the cold storage, or this is for the?
This is to expand the entire site, so updating, remodeling, enlarging our styrofoam processing capabilities.
Thank you. I mentioned the only item that isn't part of this. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item nine is to consider Resolution 22-1/12, Adopting Assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 22-1. Okay. And, public open house meetings were held during evening hours on October 13, 2021, and January 26, 2022, to provide information about the project and listen to comments and concerns from property owners. And council accepted the feasibility report on December 7 and ordered the improvement and advertisement for bids on February 15. A contract was awarded to Douglas Kerr Underground LLC on April 19, 2022, and work is planned to begin during the week of May 2. Council, anything else, anything you want to give, Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is just a formality as part of the 429 assessment process. The city has now expended the funds, we've got it under contract. This just levies, or adopts the assessments, those will get levied by the county later this year. So it's just a formality. I'm happy to answer questions.
Very good.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
We have 29 different street segments, and they're all nicely in Ward 4. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-1/12, Adopting the Assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 22-1.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, and second by Carlson. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item 10 is a very similar item. Consider Resolution 22-2/12, Adopting Assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 22-2, which is another 27 streets in basically the same neighborhood.
Yep. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-2/12, Adopting the Assessments for Street Reconstruction Project 22-2.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. I'm sorry, Mr. Hammer, was there anything you wanted to add to that one?
No, Mr. Mayor, same thing as the last one. Thank you.
All right, very good.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would just, we say it every time we're doing any of the work on the reconstruction. On the CityWell website, there is, you know, a place that you can get a notify me, and it will send you information if you want to get updates of what's happening in the city or the construction projects. So if you live in those areas, and yet you will always get door hangers if there's something that you need to personally be aware of, but you can get information straight from the website, so don't hesitate to sign up for those emails.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discussion on that item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I'd just like to recognize the fact that Coon Rapids does a great job reconstructing these roads. I've been to a lot of communities across the state and across the country that don't do that, and I'm glad that we have the support from the council to get things like this done all the time.
All right. Any other discussion?
Thank you. Did I second that?
Yeah, me too.
I don't think you can second that. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are on item 11, which is to consider appeal of denial of multiple pet permit, 11356 Flintwood Street. Mr. Brody, you want to start that one?
Yeah, I can, just to kind of get a little bit of background before we start and kind of how I envisioned it going tonight. On December 26, 2021, the city, through its police chief, denied Ms. Compton's multi-pet permit. City Code Section 213 allows for any person aggrieved by the decision to appeal that decision to the city council by filing a request with the city manager within 10 days after the decision. Ms. Compton has filed a timely appeal of the decision to deny the multi-pet appeal permit, and that appeals before the council tonight. After reviewing the accompanying documentation to the staff memo, that's all the attachments that are in the staff memo, considering the findings and the decision of the police chief, and any testimony presented tonight, under City Code 26213, the council may affirm or reject the decision of the police chief. Alternatively, the city may add reasonable conditions in this decision granting a permit, or may delete any conditions previously imposed by the police chief. How I would suggest the council proceed tonight is allow city staff, namely Chief Wise and others, if necessary, to present first to the council, and then Ms. Compton and her attorney, along with three individuals that Ms. Compton's attorney had identified to me to present to the council. I would note that he initially had requested five, and it's now three. I would note that the matter, I'm sorry, and would note that how the hearing is conducted is ultimately up to the mayor as the presiding officer. As a reminder, the sole purpose of tonight's hearing is to hear Ms. Compton's appeal of the denial of her multiple pet permit, and the city council will only consider facts directly related to that matter when it's making its decision. Also, as a reminder, I know we got an audience full of folks that this is not a public hearing, and members of the public are generally not permitted to address the council at this time. With that, I would suggest if we wanted to proceed as you wish, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Well, we should finish our staff presentation, right?
Yes.
And then we'll go on.
So I would defer them to Chief Wise.
Chief Wise.
Mayor, Council, a number of documents have been presented to you and our attachments as a part of this agenda item, but I'll just provide a brief overview of how we've got to this point today on a fact basis. So prior to 2018, Ms. Compton, the person who is appealing my denial, Ms. Compton had a multiple pet permit that was approved by me personally for 10 dogs and two cats. Mind you, I've been the police chief here since 2011. In October of 2018, Ms. Compton via email inquired about obtaining a permit to operate a Pomeranian business. In that email, on October 23, 2018, to a city planner, she said, at least as represented in this email, "Hi, Scott. Per our conversation today, since the city does not allow me to have a home business permit to sell dogs, I will not be applying for a business permit and will keep my dogs as pets." Accordingly, in 2018, Ms. Compton renewed her multiple pet permit again with me, and during that approval process, I approved the multiple pet permit with one condition being the no selling of puppies. Her subsequent multiple pet permits were renewed in 2019 and in 2020, in that that one condition was clearly marked on every permit, and it said, quote, "No selling of puppies," end quote. The person who assisted me with animal control, Liza Brazelton, subsequently retired. Her replacement in charge of animal control saw the renewal in August of 2021 for this multiple pet permit and saw in unusual language on the previously approved permits that said, quote, "No selling of puppies." As with all conditional permits issued by the city, we do occasionally verify As with all conditional permits issued by the city, we do occasionally verify that conditions are being followed. Accordingly, an animal control officer with the police department sent an email on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, to Ms. Compton, asking to purchase a puppy. Ms. Compton agreed to sell a male puppy for seven hundred dollars. On the basis of that email exchange, the investigator issued a citation for a violation of City Code for operating a kennel. I was informed of that citation, and because of that violation, and because I am not allowed to grant permission to someone to violate City Code, I denied the renewal of the multiple pet permit, and said so via a letter that was addressed to Ms. Compton, and in that letter, the process for appealing my decision was in there, and obviously, this isn't the first time we've been through this for multiple pet permits or otherwise, is that that appeal is before you tonight. And I think that should provide you a decent background of where we're at.
Mr. Brody, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but as clarification, the reason no selling of puppies, why is that a thing?
Under our, under our code, you're allowed to have a, generally in speaking, we're allowed to have three animals, or, you know, three dogs or three cats, a combination without any additional permit. You are allowed to have pets above that amount if you do file for, or do make application for the multiple pet permit, which many individuals do in Coon Rapids. In addition, you know, under our code, we address it in a couple of different ways, that we do not allow kennels under our zoning code in residential areas, and that's where Ms. Compton obviously resides in as a residential area. Kennels are only allowed in, you're going to put me on the spot, I think, commercial and.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Office zoning, that's in the memo, so I can see that there. And so, and a kennel is defined as a business where three or more dogs, cats, or any combination thereof are kept boarded, bred, or offered for sale. In addition, under the multiple pet, we also have, you can get a kennel license if you are able to from a, from a location perspective, and it's a little bit of a different definition, but essentially the same thing, is that you can't, you know, sell then animals or in that, under that, or you'd be considered a kennel, and obviously, you can't have a kennel in a residential spot, and that's why the issue came forward today. I would add, and it's in the memo, that there was some additional follow-up besides that email exchange where they went out to the residents in October, so I just want to reference that, it is in the memo, and was part of Chief Wise's initial review of it.
Yeah, thank you. Does council have any questions of staff before we open it up to the appellant?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Just looking at, at the code of ordinances, at six dash two oh three, which is captioned authority to issue, it says, "The police chief is hereby authorized to approve, or approve with conditions, or deny applications for kennel licenses or multiple pet permits in the city." And so, is it my understanding that when they had these prior approvals here, the condition that was stated that was part of the approval was the no selling of puppies as a part of the issuance of the multiple pet permit?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess in some ways, that would be, even if it wasn't stated, it would be implied through the ordinance, because you're not allowed to sell.
Sure.
Or operate as a kennel.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, so if we could have Ms. Compton and her attorney and whoever come up to the amble, please. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. I guess I, I'm no Sharon.
Before we proceed, I apologize, before we proceed, we probably want to get a name and a.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we need the name and the address for the record, I'm sorry. I was still figuring out which postering was going on there. Okay.
My name is Candy Dawson, and I'm here on behalf of Sharon, and I just wanted to come tonight in support of her. She is a very honest, from what she's being portrayed, I think she's just a very honest person, and I know the difference between a kennel and someone who just loves dogs. Sharon is not in a way, I believe, running a kennel. I have gotten one dog right now, and my daughter has two Pomeranians. Two of the Pomeranians she gave to us just because she's a kind person, and one of the Pomeranians that I have, I did give her money, a rehoming fee is one, you know, to, just to pay for some of the vet costs. She was one-year-old, you know, she had a lot of time and money invested into the Pomeranian, so I just wanted to let you know that there is no kennel operation in her home at all. She loves her animals, I, I know the difference, you know, I've seen puppy mills, I've seen kennels, there is a big difference, you know, she doesn't, she loves every single one of her Pomeranians as her pet, so, and I, I mean, she's a good, honest woman.
Oh, my name's Teresa Burt. Oh, in Anoka, oh, seven two six Lincoln Street in Anoka.
Thank you.
I own dazzling dogs, and I know Sharon because she brings her dogs to me, and she's a very kind, loving person. She loves her dogs, just like that other gal said, and I got a dog because my dad was dying at the time, so she gave me a dog, and it helped me with that and my dad. And her son comes to my work all the time, and I just noticed that after all this has been kind of going on, it's really reflected him, like, you know, he's been having a lot of sleeping issues, and it took him a long time to come back to the shop to, like, start hanging out with us, because I think there were some issues with the raid and stuff. So, I don't know, I mean, she's a very loving, kind, honest person, she would never do anything, you know, like a kennel, this is not a kennel, they're in her house, you know, kennels are outside in a shed, so, I don't know, she's just very loving and kind, and I love her.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm Sharon Compton, and certainly, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and for hearing us, and thanks for the support of everybody that's here, and for those who are watching by TV. We've obviously been through quite a bit at our house in the last few months, and as I process the events over and over, I come back to the same place each time, how do we mend and fix this in a positive way? I sent you all packets of information showing you even the difference between a kennel and not, and clearly, in the definition of a kennel, it's about a profit-making business, and I have six years of tax returns to show you that there is no profit in a ministry operation. I don't even think I could call myself nonprofit to that extent, but, and I tried to figure out what we could have done differently when we got to this point, or how we got to this point. But at the end of this meeting, we both want a positive, healthy, and acceptable outcome for this. Yes, I want my multi-pet permit, there's no doubt I want that, and I want to continue doing what I do, and it isn't running a puppy mill, it's just allowing a few pets to have puppies here and there, and then I can share them, give them away to other people who are suffering. One of them is here tonight as a service dog. Our son Daniel, he is obviously my biggest concern in this whole thing, as you've read in the book that I sent you, he has some handicaps and suffers with some mental illness, which was due to a trauma in a previous job that he had. We've been working for the last three or four years to help him overcome a lot of those difficulties, only to have a situation happen, and then now we're dealing with a lot of trauma and stuff again. But our goal has always been to keep him with us at home, and to work with him, to mentor him spiritually, mentally, and physically. And as a result of what has happened to us, we are facing additional challenges, heightened anxiety, trauma, some physical issues, but we're going to work through all of that, we're going to do what we can to help ourselves get through that. I believe it would also be very beneficial to have Daniel meet and spend some time with a police officer. I'm thinking of Officer Pickola, is that his name?
Percola.
Percola, okay. During the raid that happened at our house, he showed quite a bit of compassion to our Daniel, and now when we're living with fear and anxiety of things, I got to figure out how to fix that, because, you know, we have wonderful police officers here in Coon Rapids. I think that our situation, this is not okay what happened to us, or how it's happened, and lack of communication is part of the big problem here. No one from the city ever called to say, hey, something looks funny here, can we have a conversation? That didn't happen, so we're past that, but how do we fix and mend this to go forward? It's very important for me that Daniel knows that the police officers here are here to help him, that when we call nine-one-one, they are coming to help us, that when they're driving down the road, we don't have to be afraid, and we know that, we know that we have an unfair, a situation here that has to be mended, I'm here to help with that resolution, to help figure that out.
Okay, Ms. Compton, if we could just stay on the multi-pet permit.
I would gladly do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to explain my Daniel. Daniel is under care over at Nice German Associates, he also has developed relationships with the grooming place, the vet, and those are very healthy places for him to be. There are many things I'm blessed about every day, and in the Bible, it talks about how we take care of the least of these. I have a compassion for the elderly, the handicapped, the mentally ill, and anybody who's suffering. That is what my primary purpose here is. I do not always plan to have ten dogs, how I ended up with ten dogs is quite a long story, but I anticipate that several will be gone in the next year or two, we'll be down to quite a few, and I know the issue isn't how many dogs we have, it's the issue that I'm supposedly selling them. And as I've stated in other documentation that you have, I rehome them away from the house, I do not have people coming to my home, I do not run a business of selling dogs, I do not have a Schedule C in my tax return as a business for selling dogs. I am merely trying to, first of all, enjoy the breed and the puppies, and what a joy I have when I see them and how they help other people. That is my full intent of what I am doing, and I'm sorry if that was misunderstood somewhere along the line. I also really want to maintain the ten dog permit, not because I want to have ten dogs, but because every so often, and we have a friend who's going through cancer treatment right now, and we've had to take her dog on and off while she's going through that, I don't board the dogs, I just want to take care of them, it's something I can offer them that does not cost them any money. I'm not into anything here for money, because I'd have to run this all differently, but, but I just want to help people, and this is a way that I can do that. The puppies have helped a lot of people over the years, and some are rehomed for a fee, most are given away, and I can assure you, there is absolutely no business at my home selling puppies or running a kennel, so I just want to make that very clear. These are true animals and offer therapy to many of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Attorney Joe Pates, one seven three eight three Ninetieth Avenue North, Maple Grove, oh my gosh, I just gave my grandparents' address, I'm sorry. I've moved, I don't live in their basement anymore. Oh, my gosh. So I'm Sharon's attorney, and thank you all for your time today. We're here today very respectfully because we don't believe that Chief Wise analyzed the factors of the ordinance the way that he should have. We have a great respect for the, we have a great respect for our law enforcement, but even the best of us make mistakes from time to time, and it's our position that the, it's definitely our position, the only appropriate response to the information in the record, the only appropriate response to all the information provided by my client from the beginning of this matter, twenty eighteen and previous years to the present, is that Sharon should get this multiple pet permit renewed with the same number of animals as in previous years. It's pretty clear, from a procedural standpoint, my client's been aggrieved, and you've heard, I would definitely take the position, all the, all of the comments you've heard tonight from Ms. Compton and her friends, they are relevant in the sense that you, as the city council, you, Mr. Mayor, need to consider what, what's happening here, and what the feelings are in the community. That was a small sampling, and should be clear from what's in the packet of the amount of people in this community who support Ms. Compton, who understand what she's really doing, and as she made perfectly clear, she's not running a kennel. She's not running a kennel. We are here today to focus on the factors presented by Coon Rapids City Ordinance six dash two eleven, and I'd like to invite you to consider the record before you, consider the history of this application, consider the history of this applicant, because this isn't the first time we're here applying for this. This is a situation where we, in my file, I've got three multiple pet permits approved, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and let me be very clear that nothing has changed about what my client is doing, or how she is conducting her ministry. So, just, it, you know, we have to look at the language of the ordinance, and so let me be very clear on behalf of my client. Sharon possesses adequate housing, adequate space, adequate fencing, she cleans her home regularly, she has since, she has from, since twenty eighteen, and a heck of a long time before that, nothing has changed. Let me be clear that there are no issues with noise that are caused by the dogs, no traffic is being generated on Flintwood Street as a result of this ministry. Sharon's neighbors have indicated their support of Sharon, and in the record, there are letters from her neighbors indicating that there's no issues, and there's not been a single unresolved complaint regarding Sharon's keeping of the dogs on the premises, and again, just look at the years of approvals, that alone should be evidence that there are no issues. And I heard the chief allude to it, and what changed was the person at the police department who saw this application for what it was, and helped the chief make the right decision. So, on my look at this, all the city has is the allegations and the citation that's been issued underpinning the kennel charge, and you heard that correctly, they're the allegations. The way I see it, with Coon Rapids, by, by, through what's happened, what I'm seeing is it's, there's been a lot of pointing to a criminal charge as a violation, and saying, well, that's a violation, because of the violation, she's not entitled to the permit. I, I, it's very clear to me, I used to work up in Brainerd as a city prosecutor, every time I would talk one-on-one with a defendant representing himself or herself, I would tell him, you have the presumption of innocence, the court has to prove you guilty, and I respect that as a prosecutor, and I would, I would invite each of you to just carefully consider. That applies in criminal court, I believe it should apply here, just, just a question to consider, are you giving Sharon this presumption? But we, even with that, I just want to be very clear about these allegations, that Sharon's not in violation of this ordinance, she's not in violation of any other ordinance, she's not in violation of any conditions placed on her by the city. We're a couple of weeks, couple of months out from our first hearing for that criminal citation, but please make no mistake, that she'll be pleading not guilty to this, and she'll be pleading not guilty to any other charge that may come up involving her pets. And she's, the reason why she's pleading not guilty is because she is not guilty as a, she's not guilty as a matter of law, because if you look at the definition of a kennel, it should be very clear from the submissions that you all have had a chance to look over, Sharon's not running a business, she's not boarding dogs, she's not breeding for the purpose of selling, she's not breeding with the primary intention of profiting from rehoming puppies, as my client made perfectly clear, this is not a puppy mill. This is a ministry to get puppies into the lives of people who desperately need them. And when I look at that, the, the result that I'm compelled to reach as I look at it, is that, is that the violation that is, I, I mean, in my mind, it's the only thing that's really been pointed to and brought up seriously as a, as an issue. So if the violation that's being pointed to isn't actually a violation, then do you really have a good reason to deny my client's application? And I, I fear that there are only three words for that. three words for that conclusion, and that's arbitrary and capricious. Mr. Mayor, members of council, please don't, please don't be misled. Analysis and application of the factors that you have to analyze and apply result, I believe, in the conclusion that Sharon is entitled to the reissuance of her multiple pet permit. Why? Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. The same application, the same information, the same underlying facts that for years previous to this led to a permit approval. And I just want to just be very clear, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the city ordinance is clear that you're the decision-maker at this point. There's no presumption in the statute, in the ordinance, in favor of the city. And so, please, I just ask you on behalf of my client, please don't act like that presumption exists. You have all the information in front of you to make the right decision, the community's watching, the resources, I believe, of the taxpayers of the city of Coon Rapids should be devoted to the wonderful things that were announced at the beginning of this meeting, and not to going after my client for something that she isn't doing. We're frustrated, but at the same time, we are respectfully frustrated. We understand the process, that's why we're here. And above all, my client has been treated unfairly. There's no, in my mind, there's no rational way to justify, on the same application, after three years of approval, a denial. I don't, that should not be the case, and you can make this right. My request, on behalf of my client, is that the city council respectfully reject the decision of the police chief. Our request is that you approve the application of my client, maintain the status quo, that you grant the multiple pet permit for ten dogs and two cats, or any other combination totaling twelve animals, with no selling of puppies to occur at the location of 11356 Flintwood Street Northwest, Coon Rapids, Minnesota. Thank you for your time.
Your Honor.
Counselor Member Johnson?
Counsel, I have a few questions. If you could return to the microphone, that'd be helpful. Thank you. And before I ask the questions, let me just preface this by saying, you know, I too have spent some time in the trenches as a prosecutor.
It was fun.
Yeah, it still is for me. The thing that I'd like Ms. Compton to know, and others in the community to know, is that, from my perspective certainly, and Ms. Compton is a constituent of mine, she lives in Ward Five, that's my ward, nothing about any of this interaction has caused me to believe that there's anything that puts her character in issue. I mean, I assume that Ms. Compton is of really good character, like the other constituents in my ward. I've not heard a bad thing, not gotten any complaints. Frankly, up until this came about, she was not on my radar as a city council member. And so, you know, I did receive the submissions and the three-ring notebook that came, and it contains, you know, character reference letters and things like that. And I just accept all of that in good faith with the intention that it's made. I don't view this as being about whether Ms. Compton is a good person or a bad person. I understand that there was this, separate and apart from the multi-pet permit process, there's this other stuff with the search warrant and citation and other things along those lines. That's for another process and another court. So I don't think it's, it's an issue where there has to be a presumption of innocence. Really, what we're looking at is whether or not the multi-pet permit was appropriately denied, and whether or not we would issue a multi-pet permit under the same circumstances and based on the evidence that the chief had, subject to any conditions. Is it fair to say, and this is my question to you, counsel, is it fair to say that from the beginning, if you go back to that time period in 2017 or 2018, that it was understood by Ms. Compton that no sale of puppies was to be allowed?
She understood that.
Okay, appreciate that.
She continues to understand that, for clarity.
Okay.
Our intention, again, we don't, we're not up here to give permission for something that we can hide a business under. That's not why we're here today.
All right. And I see that it was actually, you know, it wasn't listed in necessarily all of the permits that were issued, but I mean, I think it was even spelled out in one, no sale of puppies allowed, and things like that, as a condition of the issuance of that permit, right?
That's what the permit says. I think the, I think the important inquiry to make, and I don't know that there is an ordinance that would apply here, a definition we could think about. I mean, I, I believe, again, as my client made perfectly clear, this isn't a business, she's running at a net loss.
Focusing, sorry to interrupt you, counsel, but focusing just on the permit itself, okay? Would you agree that if somebody is in violation of a condition of a permit, that that could be appropriate grounds for the denial of a future permit?
Yes.
Okay.
But the important fact to clarify there is whether my client actually is in violation of that condition. And we would, just so the record's clear, we would deny that we are in violation of that condition. But as a matter of principle, yes, sir, you are correct.
I appreciate the argument, counsel. Now, among the pieces of evidence that you submitted, or that Ms. Compton submitted, were the email that was referenced, I believe, that talked about selling a puppy for $700 or $650 or something like that, together with a Facebook post that was similar to that. Fair to say?
I know that's in the record. I know what document you're looking at. Again, the key here is to, like anything else in any record, including probably any of the documents that are in our file, context matters. You can't just take something in a vacuum. Had, it would have been very, very clear upon further good-faith inquiry that my client rehomes, not sells. That, the entire purpose of Facebook, Facebook does not allow selling. And so, additional context.
Facebook allows a whole bunch of stuff that I don't like.
Well.
But, you know, I know we're talking about dogs and a couple of cats under the circumstances, but I kind of come from the old school of if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck.
Could be a goose, respectfully.
Yeah. I know the difference. But the thing that I'm getting at with this is, there is a decision for this, counsel, to make as we kind of sift through this. And there are a couple of components to it. One component to it is whether or not there was a legitimate basis, based on the record and the information that the chief had at the time, to deny the reissuance of a permit. That's one issue. The other issue is, kind of a practical issue, having a little bit of additional information, maybe that some of the money that changed hands was really for the purpose of reimbursing for vet bills and paying for the expensive things over time, and, you know, buying food for the dogs and caring for the dogs and things like that. Whether or not Ms. Compton could qualify for, or should be issued, another multi-pet permit, but with clarified conditions.
And here again, we want, we understand that we need this multiple pet permit. That's why we're here today. That's why we haven't just let this go and continue doing whatever we want to do. We would welcome clarity, and this is frankly, the first time that I have heard the city extend, to start a conversation like this. And so, I, we understand, I completely agree that that is the decision, and those are the factors before the court.
Well, I am one council member, not the whole city, but I am, I am Ms. Compton's council member. And I guess, when I look back at 2018, where kind of there was an understanding, where I think people thought there was a meeting of the minds, and then I looked to 2021, '22, where it looks like that got off the rails a little bit, and maybe further clarifications are maybe needed. I wonder if there's not an opportunity to clarify some of this. And I would also say that I am, you know, I'm probably, I think I'm the only council member who has an actual dog box in the back of his pickup truck. So I'm not, I'm not most interested in unhoming dogs. And I guess, I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to your client about whether there might be the opportunity to arrive at a space where there could be some additional conditions or understandings, and present that as a settlement offer to the city.
That was not something we came in here today to discuss. It's certainly a conversation I believe we'd be open to having, as long as, as long as we're just clearly communicating. Like Sharon made perfectly clear, we want to be part of the solution, we want to work together, we want to do so in a way that makes sense.
Understanding that none of this, and what we do here, is intended in any way to affect any of the other proceedings that are going on. But, you know, I think that that is something, I would just say this and leave the record on my part right here, that is something that I would be interested in hearing more about. So I don't want to interrupt any of the other council members, but.
Thank you. Anybody else, counsel? Or anybody else?
So, I guess, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Member Gaisler?
You know, so, reading the record and staying to the multiple pet permit, for me, I totally understand the rationale why this was denied by Chief Wise. And to me, where this is what had been going on since, you know, early days, it maybe is a trust-but-verify kind of a situation that we got ourselves into, that there was a lot more trust, and when we had the new person coming in, they were like, okay, I need to verify everything. And that's where we had our break in communication, that there was this unwritten, unagreed-to, you know, because we just trusted. And so, with that, you know, I appreciate what Chief Wise does, and I think it was appropriate for the permit to be denied. But I would be open to putting in more specific conditions. To me, rehoming and getting reimbursement for it is a sale of a puppy, from a practical perspective for me. Having a puppy that isn't sold at my home, but across the street or somewhere else, is still a sale of a puppy, from my perspective. So, to me, it means, what do we need to do to look forward, to say, are there conditions, are there agreements that we can make that allow the ten puppies, the ten dogs and potential litters, and still keep that permit, but keep it within the acceptable boundaries and a consistent common agreement between both parties?
And so, if I may briefly speak to that, the, if tonight is the start of a conversation between my client and the city through our respective attorneys, myself and Mr. Brody, who's been a delight to work with, then I, we're open to that. My only comment would be that trust-but-verify, and especially the trust bit of it, I would just ask, as we walk forward, that perhaps it would go both ways, from us to the city as well.
Yep.
And so, that, yeah, if, if.
I'm a former auditor, so.
And I would say that if, if that's the, if that's where the city has chosen to come down, again, we respect the process. That's why we're here. We understand that this decision is before you. We understand, you know, we understand that the chief has his point of view. I believe, looking at the language of the ordinance, and you have my argument in writing, and you've now heard it in person, that I don't believe application of these factors would, there's, I don't think there's a reason why my client should not get the permit as she has in past years. That said, I recognize that you're the decision-makers and I'm not. If today is the start of that conversation, then, then so be it.
And I guess I would just like to remind counsel that we're looking to either affirm the denial, reject the decision of the police chief, or add any reasonable conditions, or delete any conditions. We really should make a decision tonight, I would think.
Mr. Mayor, Johnson?
Thank you. A couple of things. I take your point on the ordinances and things like that. There are a couple of things, though, and there's the ordinance, and then there's also the permit itself and the condition as stated in the permit and understood by the parties. And I think this is one where, you know, if this council were kind of so inclined, I think that the council could vote to affirm the denial and be on very solid ground, because there was a stated condition, and there is evidence that the stated condition was violated, and therefore, further issuance could be denied appropriately by the chief. And I also want to say, just very briefly, I don't, I mean, I understand how the actions of the police department, as a prosecutor, I understand this like intimately, but the actions of a police department can sometimes be perceived by the person who is the subject of the investigation. It's scary. You know, it's, it's, from the perspective of somebody who is being investigated, it's intrusive. And I don't want to take away from anybody's individual perspectives on that, but I also know our police department real well. And I've also, you know, read the search warrant that was issued by the judge, which is an order to our police department to execute a search. And I know police practices with respect to that, and I know what officers go through when they don't know what's on the other side of a door, in a lot of situations. And so, I know there's a lot of emotion that's in this. Now, I would say, I think there's an opportunity here. I don't want to say to hit the reset button or anything that sounds like that, but I guess the question I would have to you, counsel, is if for a period of time, discreet period of time, this council were to table a final decision on this, to give you an opportunity to work with the city attorney on how to more clearly articulate conditions for, and to negotiate conditions for, an approval that would get us back to ten and two, and so there was a better meeting of the minds, would that be something that your client might be open to? And I don't, I'm asking you this off the cuff. You know, you may need to take a moment, step out with your client or something, just to have a conversation, but, or are you insisting on a resolution tonight?
I would like to have a moment to confer with my client, if that's all right.
It's up to the mayor.
Yeah, no, that's, there's no problem with that, if you're so inclined.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Just, I would just make it really brief, because we're kind of in a old battery.
I understand, Mr. President.
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel.
And knowing that actually hasn't been ratified by the council.
Nope.
In any way, shape, or form.
They just need an opportunity to talk.
I have a question. Can anybody else?
Maybe if staff could check it out, since we're in the middle of a proceeding, somebody in the audience. in the audience has a question, somebody want to?
Does the city in Coon Rapids?
I'm going to.
Mr. Mayor, do we want to take like a five-minute recess, or?
Yeah, I suppose it's not fair to discuss it with them out of the room, so.
No, we shouldn't, we shouldn't.
We could, or.
Want to?
So, should we just, we've never done that. We could, we could recess and reconvene when they come back in, I suppose.
Sure, we could, I'd move that we consider the matter in temporary recess until counsel returns with, with his client.
I'll second.
Okay.
Want to vote on it?
So, we have a motion and a second to take a quick recess until they come back in. There probably not a discussion on that.
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, don't we, it's not discussable? Not until they return? No, I mean, the motion to recess?
The motion? Well, I kind of took it like a, like a table, yeah, because I, which, which you don't discuss, and I thought I probably had the authority to do it without a vote, so I figured we'd just do it. They're gone, can't talk about it anyway.
Right. Right.
Call this back to order again then?
You're up.
Okay, thank you. I've had a chance to confer with my client. We would, if, if, we are willing to have this tabled, I will, I, and then I can talk to Mr. Brody, and we can see if we can work something out. I'd ask to be, I would ask if, if, I, I'd ask to have this placed on another mutually acceptable city council meeting. And then, but there will be stuff going on behind the scenes between me and Mr. Brody to try to talk about what, perhaps what clarified conditions could look like. We, and, we very much appreciate this, and I, we are, I mean, and I guess just for clarity, we will not try to say, we, we will, we agree that we will not make the argument that by delaying this, the city has acted with some sort of misconduct. That can be very clear on the record, I'm not going to make any procedural argument that there should have been a decision tonight.
All right, I appreciate that. Mr. Brody, um, do you have a suggestion about how to frame the issue of a return time period? Or do you have a suggestion along those lines?
I think we could probably table it indefinitely so that, I anticipate this won't take long. We'll either come to an agreement, or we won't.
Okay.
But just to, given that we're not sure why.
No!
And then I would just ask, and perhaps on behalf of staff, that you've spoke a little bit on sort of what you're looking for, or what council may be looking for, but to give us perhaps some, it's a, I know it's hard, we're putting now, kind of flipping it around, putting the spotlight on you guys.
Yep.
But what you're looking for, for parameters, so that we know, at least from a staff perspective, and I get it, we're.
I'm happy to share what I've got.
Yeah.
I think primarily this is a, this is a residential residence. We have multi-pet permits in town, we have four, over forty of them. We don't have any of them anywhere near twelve animals. The next one is at seven animals. I think you lose the primary function of a residence when you start having twelve animals, and you have four to five litters of, of, or all these puppies through the year. I think it's, it's, it's no longer functioning as a home. So, my, I, I would like to see us actually decide on this, and actually allow her to have her ten and her two, but no more breeding, no more puppies, because, because they keep coming back on the market. However they end up getting disposed of, in my mind, that's still selling. So, that's, that's where I would like to see this end up, whether it's through our decision, whether it's through a meeting of the minds, that's what I would support, is, is starting to throttle this back to get back to a reasonable number of, of animals. You know, to start with the ten and the two, and then as attrition, as they go off, then not adding anymore till we get back to something acceptable.
And, Your Honor.
Counselmember Johnson?
And I, I would like some clarification on, on the condition of no selling or sale of, of animals would, would mean. I, you know, I, it does not strike me to be an unreasonable thing to ask somebody who is taking a puppy from a litter to reimburse for the typical ordinary vet bills that go with shots, or whatever comes with that. I mean, some dogs require tail docking, or, or things like that, and maybe some clarification on what is really being limited with respect to that, because I think the ordinance is geared at for-profit.
And Counselmember Johnson, we, we can examine that, I think, but I struggle, that's a slippery slope. I mean, to me, and I refer to Counselmember Geisler's comments on, you can call it whatever, and, and your own, you can call it what you, you know, duck is a duck. Um, so that, and, you know, the next person comes in, "I'm not selling, I'm not selling puppies, I'm rehoming them, and I'm only collecting this," it makes it administratively difficult, I think it. But again, like I said, you're telling me your, you know, what your parameters are.
Well, yeah, and I, I would, I would just, I would just share that there are, if there are necessary vet bills, then there's a bill that can back it up. And so, that, that to me does not strike me as being a profit kind of center. But that's, I'm one council member, and so that's the kind of thing that I think is verifiable. Um, it, it might not rise to the level of, you know, $700 or whatever, but it might be something that is, is customary with respect to, you know, turning over a healthy puppy. So, you think about it. That's my little input.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Geisler?
Yeah, I, I think I made a couple of comments. I think, to me, the other clarification that we need to do, I heard some specific language that kind of went, hmm, that it's, is it the selling happening at the home? Where to me, the selling is from the owner of the dog. Whether that's at their home, at a park, at somewhere else, or giving to another breeder to sell, it is the, the traceability of, of that dog. It is that action, to me, that encompasses selling. It's not just at that residential location. But it is the perpetuating activity of breeding at that location that initiates that action. A little bit towards what Mayor Cook said. If there is an acceptability of, to me, having all of the dogs breedable is a risk, I see. And if there's, you know, maybe a certain number of dogs that are permanent dogs, that may be spayed or neutered. And, and maybe not all of them, because anybody else who has two dogs at their house, they could have a litter, and they could give away those dogs, so.
If you have two dogs, you can actually sell them. So, that's, it's the other component.
Right, you know, and, and so, so just taking a look at, you know, is it a hard cliff of no litters, no puppies? Or is it, you know, maybe that there's a small subset of the animals that would be potentially? I mean, it just, it makes it an administrative nightmare, I totally understand. And so maybe there has to be some sort of accounting that comes to the city with that annual review of the permit of, this is what we have, this is what we've done, this is where we are, and, and it, it gets to be that transparency of what's happening.
Your Honor. Counselmember Hernandez Jr.
Just, just a question, like the whole selling part of it. Is there any way, you know, with, with Ms. Compton, you know, rehoming the dogs? Like, say, you say you have a potential buyer, would it, would it work out also, maybe, to, for that potential buyer, maybe to pay for the vet services possibly, so you get past that selling point? Is that, is that an option at all, or, you know, you have, you know? That's just, I'm curious about that.
I, I think we're really creating an administrative nightmare. I mean, it's still just a different version of selling. Okay.
I didn't want to interrupt anybody else, because once I make a motion, it's, we're not having further discussion on it.
Right, well, once it's seconded, yeah.
Right. So I didn't want to cut anybody off.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Counselmember Griscoviac?
Before that happens, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, Counselmember Johnson. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an auditor, I'm just a councilperson, looking out for the best interest of our residents. So, I, I, in, in my opinion, I think everyone agreed, including counsel, that the chief was, made a rational decision in denying the, the, the permit based on the code because of the no-selling of puppies, but I kind of want to ask some questions outside of that. If I could ask, have those numbers over these years, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, that you've had the pet permit, have those numbers of dogs stayed about the same, and the number of litters stayed about the same? Let's say yes?
Yes. I have some geriatric ones that are on their last year, so, guess that's going to go down in front of ten.
Okay, and then.
Are you going to have more questions of her, because if so, we're going to need her to come up to the AMBO.
Oh, no, that's my last question to her, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right.
My next question is of, of staff, because I think it was noted, but I just wanted to confirm. There haven't been any complaints from neighbors in, for this pet permit over the years. Is that true statement, staff?
Mayor, counsel, not since 2018. There were a couple of old ones from 2017, barking dogs, but it was low-level stuff that was never verified. In other words, the animal control officer never was able to verify a citizen complaint, but nothing since 2018, so four years of no calls for service.
Okay, those are my only two questions, I just wanted to ask those before we moved.
Okay, Counselmember Carlson?
I just want to clarify too, just my.
You want to move your mic around there?
Oh, sorry, that's pretty far away, isn't it? All right. Yeah, I just want to clarify, you know, just my thoughts on it. First of all, I have received a lot of communication from people who are familiar with Ms. Compton, and I also have no doubt that she's done some good things for the community. Of course, we're looking, you know, at this, you know, just whether or not we're going to uphold the denial of the permit, maybe not tonight even, but that's what we're looking at. I have no, absolutely no doubt that Chief Wise made the right decision based on the information he had on denying that permit. Ultimately, for me, the main thing with me, the endgame, is I'd like to see Ms. Compton keep her ten dogs and two cats, and for some way that we can work out some kind of a agreement on the other issues, then, you know, so be it. I just want to give my perspective on that.
And it's, interestingly enough, it's still going to be the, the, up to the chief of police each year to approve this permit or not, and if there is still selling of puppies, it's going to be really his job to deny the permit annually, as long as there's selling of puppies, however you'd call it. So I really think that has to be dealt with. We have to somehow, that, that's got to stop, I don't know. And, and again, I just think it's, it's too many animals for a house, and that's, but.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Johnson.
One last thing, and I would encourage both counsel and Ms. Compton, through her counsel, to consider is, is whether or not, especially given what people have heard from the counsel today, is whether or not down the road, ten is the right number, or if maybe a different number is, is a, a better number that helps avoid some, some uncertainty, understanding the value this brings to everybody in Ms. Compton's family, and, and the like. With that, and with the agreement and consent of counsel for Ms. Compton, I would make a motion to table a final decision in this matter until a future date, when it is either recommended to come back on by a city staff or the city attorney, understanding that that recommendation would also have the input of counsel for, for Ms. Compton when it comes back to counsel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this. There's no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No. Still tabled. I'm, I'm sorry, still tabled with Counsel, Counselmember Griscoviac and Mayor Cook opposed. Thank you. And we are up to, I don't have, oh, we're up to the open-mic portion of the meeting. Is anybody here to address counsel for any items that are not on the city agenda, on the agenda this evening? All right. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Approach the podium, state your name and address, and all remarks will be made from the podium. And then, um, if there's any questions from counsel, it'll be for clarification only, and then if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forward to the speaker, meaning probably no answers tonight, but you get whatever you need to state, sir, and name and address.
Very good. Well, my name's Mark Brocki, and I live at 3508 Mississippi Drive in Coon Rapids. And Jennifer Geisler is my councilperson, and I've talked to Jennifer about this in the past, as well as having talked to Pat Carlson about it. So, my concern is excessive vehicle noise on Coon Rapids Boulevard, especially on Saturday, when the cruising of the modified vehicles is taking place. And I went, I took a look at the Minnesota statute, and it says, "Every motor vehicle shall at all times be equipped with a muffler to prevent excessive or unusual noise." There's, there's some additional verbiage in there, but those are the essential parts of it. So, I live two streets away from Coon Rapids Boulevard, so I don't get the worst of the noise from Coon Rapids Boulevard, the people who are living closer are getting more of it. But, you know, my perspective is that, is that all the motor vehicles should be basically as quiet as a new car that you get out of the showroom, and that when people are modifying their vehicles to make them louder, that that's really not legal. I, I consider that to be excessive noise. And when, when these folks with these vehicles, which are loud when they're just cruising along, when they step on the throttle, then the noise really goes up. And, you know, some of the vehicles that go down Coon Rapids Boulevard, you can't, it's not that you're hearing them two blocks away, you can hear them two miles away, they're so loud. Well, anyway, I guess I would like to suggest that the city aggressively enforce the excessive or unusual noise ordinance, because I don't think that most vehicle owners want to spend money, spend money paying fines, or spend time going to court to appeal their citation. And I'm inclined to think that a vigorous enforcement of the law would, over several weeks, significantly decrease the number of excessive or unusual noise violators. So, that's pretty much it, and, and I think I stuck within my three minutes there.
You did, you did, and I can tell you, you, you speak for a lot of folks, I, I totally understand, so.
Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
I would just say, you know, I appreciate you coming, you know, I know we've had email conversations, and you're not the only person that I hear from about the noise on the Boulevard, and it is a challenge, and, you know, our, our police department, we have our enforcers there as much as we can, you know, with, because it's overtime, and you can't, they can't be everywhere. But I think, I think your point is taken, and we'll look to, to get a response back to you.
I'd just make one other comment, and that is that I'm not against modified cars. I've been a car enthusiast all my life, and I, I actually sometimes go up to the Boulevard to see what's going by that's interesting. But, you know, you don't have to have a noisy car to have an interesting car.
Very true.
Thanks, thanks very much.
I always yell at that from the side, "You are ruining it!" You know, or, or "Stop!", or some things that are not allowed here. All right, I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and, I'm sorry, is there anybody else here to address counsel for open mic? No? All right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are to other business. And before we get rolling on other, on other stuff, Mr. Hammer, when does the hot asphalt plant open? Is it? Are we close?
Mr. Mayor, we did get kind of our first delivery, you probably noticed it out front here.
I didn't.
Robinson Drive, but it, it's opening as we speak, and there are some areas that we definitely have some work to do, but we're, we're getting much, much closer, and I'm excited about it.
Okay, yeah, because that Direct River Drive, right near Coon Rapids Boulevard, Frontage Road, by the car wash there is really rough, and if my wife didn't drive it so much, I wouldn't hear about it so often, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Geisler?
And so maybe Mr. Hammer can speak on this one too, just to make sure that everybody's aware that there is hydrant flushing going on on the west side of the city, and when, when that happens, it can stir up sediment, and so the water can get a little discolored, but it's still safe. And you can back me up on that, and make sure I'm, all the more technical.
Yes, Counselmember Geisler, thank you. We have been receiving a lot of calls on that. We started with our, our larger mains, so it does stir up the system. So certainly, the residential lines are eight-inch in diameter typically. We're, we're really flushing the ones, the mains, down the county roads, coming out of our, our water towers. So, it is definitely stirring up the system. We're taking a little more active approach, and kind of moving the water systematically, but it is safe to drink. I would ask people, if you just go to your wash tub, or something on the low level, and turn on the water and let it run for a little while, it'll clear up faster. But it is safe, and it is something we do on an annual basis.
Very good.
And then, one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
This Saturday, May seventh, at our recycling center, where we had Ms. Sinclair in earlier, it's a shredding event, and I know that's a very popular event where people can bring in, and I think up to five boxes, or bags, of documents that can get, you know, put into the, the trucks for the shredding, and that is on this Saturday.
Yeah, as a clarification, that you can go in there and shred documents. We've got, I think, one or two, two commercial shredders? But this is the day you get to just dump the whole bag into the bin, and they put it in the truck, and it's wonderful. It's also very popular.
Yes.
All right, other business coming for our council? Ms. Lenzweier? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to announce that this is an election year, and candidate filing is going to open on May 17th. Anyone interested in filing for offices, what is up this year, mayor and council members in wards three and five? The candidate packet is available on the city's website under the elections tab, or you can call the city clerk's office. The filing period runs from May 17th through May 31st. Regular business hours, with the exception of that last day, May 31st, we're open until 5:00 PM.
Very good, thank you. Can I just say how nice it is to have Peter Bodley back? It's just so awesome to see him, we haven't seen him for a long time. Welcome back, Peter. All right, other business? Oh. Counselmember Hernandez Jr.
I'd just like to bring up the topic, so I'm, I'm, you know, very into the community, and I like to bring up the topic of donor registration. So right now, we have the Adi family, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with the Adi family, Rocky Adi, deep Coon Rapids ties, is currently suffering through end-stage kidney disease. And I've been working hard with his wife, and we're, you know, trying to get his story out there. You know, he's in desperate need of a, of a transplant, and I just want to bring just, you know, the awareness out there of donor registration, and, you know, we're working hard. He's got really deep ties here, he's on the Coon Rapids, you know, the baseball board, and football, and stuff along those lines, so it's a great family. I just, I just wanted to bring that to counsel here. I, we always talk about, you know, we want to take care of our own. I just, I just wanted to bring that up there, because I deeply care about this family, and I just wanted to bring that, just the topic, and, you know, get it out there, just the importance of donor registration, and, and, yeah, and just, we have one of our own that are, is in desperate need of that, so. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselmember Griscoviac?
It dawned on me when you brought up the water main flushing, so I have a question for Mr. Hammer. I, I got that card in the mail to have my water meter changed out. How's that process going? Are we kind of on track to get all those done, or is there anything we need to know?
Yes, Counselmember Griscoviac, we are tracking well. It, it has slowed a little bit, trying to get the meters in place, but since we did a larger contract early on, starting last year, they, they're aware of our needs going forward, so we're, we're keeping up. We are getting, I think we got forty, forty-one hundred planned for the city this year, so you are that, in that group. I will also make you aware, and it came about last year, that we do have kind of a takeaway at the end of all of that, so there's a little postcard that's left, will describe what was done as part of the project. Maybe there is a discrepancy that we can't do the repair, so here's what we would need you to do in that, and then a little QR code, take a survey, just to make sure that the contractor is upholding the standards that we're asking them to do when they go and do this. So, it, it has slowed slightly, but we are making good progress, and I don't think there's any concern that we're going to get this year finished, and come back again for next year, and get it accomplished over the three- or four-year window that we set out initially.
Thanks, and the water's just, just shut off for a short time, right, like an hour or less, or?
Oh, it could take five minutes.
Oh, okay.
It all depends, so please clear the area away, so they have good access to the space. Make sure that all your plumbing is in good repair, and it would go very quickly.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Hammer, I didn't realize that they were doing the survey cards. Have, have many, many people been doing that, and have you been tracking on them? Because I have had some complaints about them either not showing, or showing late and not calling, and I'm just kind of curious how the feedback is.
Mr. Mayor, those were new, after kind of the first year, we started to get some feedback that, you know, same things you had mentioned there, and so what we wanted to do is make sure that we had a, a takeaway for them going forward. So, I get them, they actually, it's a survey the city created, so it's just a QR code they provide, so it goes directly to our communications folks, and they will forward me anything that they get. I think in total, for this year, I've received four responses, but whenever they come in, Jenny over there in communications will forward them on to me, and I haven't seen one of those four responses that said there was anything negative. So I would encourage people to fill those out, positive or negative, but there's been very little response to date.
Very good, thank you. All right, any other business to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Counselmember Carlson, second by birthday girl, Counselmember Geisler. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, for adjourn.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.